We call the meetings at order and please call roll.
Jim Benage.
President.
Jeff Elshoff.
Here.
Jeff Hawes.
Here.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Justin Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Appreciate it, thank you. I want to remind all council members, make sure your microphones are turned on. And as we do at all of our meetings, we'll begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silent prayer. If you all bow your heads and join me in that, please. Amen. Now, would you please rise and join us in the saying of the pledge allegiance to the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice
Want to welcome everybody to our final July meeting of your Bel Air City Council. I mean, tonight, we actually have a fairly light agenda this evening, but we'll begin first with the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our July 3rd council meeting, and also per some discussion we had at our workshop on July 10th, establishing December 24th as a discretionary holiday and December 31st as a bonus day for city employees. That is in the consent agenda this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. First and second, do we have any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Next is appropriations ordinance 2018-14. This is in the amount of $271,289.30.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve appropriations ordinance 18-14.
Second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Don't have any city requested appearances for this evening? There's citizens concerned. I have received a card from Sylvia Fort. You can come forward and state your name and address.
Sylvia Fort, I live at 472 North Hart in Bel Air. And we fortunately did not have the zoning, rezoning meeting tonight, but I do want to talk about the character of our neighborhoods. There are two neighborhoods in Bel Air that are historic, traditional, well-established neighborhoods with large lots. Many cities recognize and preserve such areas. There are similar areas in Wichita and Woodlawn, Oliver, and North 13th. The truth of all of them is, when they're gone, they're gone. No one else will be putting these neighborhoods in. We have listened to, or we have come across information about zoning and uses of property nearby being considered as part of the golden rules. Well, in our case, Wichita is across the street and they have large vacant lots. We've had the specter raised of a pawn shop, hotel, group home, et cetera. But those are Wichita's plans, those aren't Bel Air's. There's also a nice medical facility about a block away. The people that live in Aurora Park, to a man, were unanimous in their desire not to see it rezoned. The people of Aurora Park want to keep our character. As I said before, once you start chinking the armor, it's going to be gone. And before long, we will have little mini duplexes all over the place, because they will look at those lots as cash cows. So I'm asking you to really consider the primary golden rule, the first one, the character of the neighborhood when you make decisions. I have not heard anyone discuss in detail the master plan, et cetera, and that leads me to fear we may have a rubber stamp already in place. We look to our council, we look to our planning and zoning as boards that are stewards of Bel Air. They're responsible for our history, our tradition, and our ultimate character of the whole city. We cannot have one homogeneous city. We need different areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address council this evening? If not, we're going to move on to...
The lady over there. She don't have a card, she held up her... The one in the green jacket.
Ma'am?
Do you want to speak?
Okay, I think so. Okay. We're going to want to start with council member reports, and we'll start with council member Elshoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was absent on July 3rd meeting, because I was on vacation with my family in the cornfields of Illinois, and it was wonderful. I just had a brief report, so on June 28th, I met on the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority meeting, and we just had a couple of things. As of that meeting on June 28th, Kansas was still officially in a drought condition. I don't know how the recent rains have changed that, but we discussed that a little bit. And we just had some basic issues come before the board. The employees of the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority, we were able to consider offering a flexible spending account as an additional benefit. We have a compliance service provided by Gilmore Bell to make sure all our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. And that was pretty much it. There wasn't a whole lot going on there, but CCUA is there to provide us our water and sewer services, and things are humming along there. That's all I have to report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have no formal report.
Mr. Mayor, I was able to attend the WAMPO meeting last Tuesday, the week ago today. For those who may not be aware, the WAMPO is Wichita area metro planning organization, and they are the organization that funnels money to federal and state money for local projects in the Wichita metropolitan area. The Woodlawn project will be one of those projects. So they are looking for public input to tip updates and tip for projects that they have approved or are considering approving, and so they're looking for public input on those. Tristan has put a link on the Bel Air website to that survey, so if anyone's interested to go on that website, on the Bel Air website, and link to the WAMPO public input section there. There are a couple of projects that there may be some interest in. There's a couple in Kechai and one in Valley Center that they're considering, so feel free to please do that. Those public comments can be made until July 31st, so still have a week and a half, okay? Also, WAMPO is considering, they have not approved this, a concept of advanced construction. So where this is coming from, last year, they had a $2.6 million excess in funds, and so they moved that towards bike and pedestrian studies. This year, their current estimate is have excess of about $3 million, $3.5 million in funds, so they're considering options of what to do. Advanced construction is a concept where they approve, where approved projects, having have tipped, approved already, can start construction early under the advanced construction program. This is only a concept right now. They've not developed the idea, and although it is done other places, and the federal and KDOT both are embracing this concept, so it's something to be aware of. So, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Recently in Bel Air, there's been a few rashes of outbreaks of break-ins in cars. I just want to remind everybody to just please keep aware of what's going on in the neighborhood, be aware of the neighbors, make sure you are locking your cars. It was actually on my block that this happened. Luckily, nothing was taken out of the cars, even though they were rifled through. So I'm not sure what they're looking for, but just please be on the lookout for that, and that's all I have.
Appreciate it. I just have four items I want to talk about tonight. One to piggyback on what council member Hawes said, and I see a police officer in the back who was there responding. There, yeah, we had every single car that was left out, and I know in our home, I'm 99% sure that I lock them every night, but it was the strangest thing. Nothing really was taken, but yet, what, 10 cars, doors were open and things went through. So talked with another police officer friend of mine, who said we could call those people shoppers. They were looking for identity or things of that nature to steal. So just to, I want to thank the Bel Air Police Department for their quick response and taking reports and stepping up patrol, and just as a public service announcement to all of the citizens, use your garages, lock your cars, and that should, could tell a lot of that, and don't leave valuables out in sight, obviously. But, yeah, so even this one without valuables out in sight, like I said, people are still there looking for something, so we're... Second thing I want to talk about is on Saturday, or, yeah, we had the citywide pickup, trash pickup, and I saw a number of my neighbors had, had stuff out. Funny, I got to watch one wife pull something back in that her husband took out, but that's another issue. Just let that one alone, but, yeah, so did that. This is also our first meeting since July 4th. I want to thank all the citizens. I'm not aware of any major complaints, and looked like a lot of the stuff was picked up pretty quickly for that, so do appreciate that. The fourth item I want to talk about, I shared this with the council at our workshop, and this is one of my little personal things with, anybody who knows me knows I love kids and I love animals. The on July 4th, and if you're on Nextdoor, it seems like Nextdoor has become basically a landing page for lost and found. Every day, there are more and more dogs and cats that are lost and found, more lost, even where a police department is picking up dogs, especially on the 4th, when animals are scared, they seem to escape, and that's what happened. On the 4th, I was out visiting some people at 45th and Oliver, and we saw a little doggy, and he was scared to death, soaking wet and hot, and obviously he was someone's pet. He had a fresh haircut, rolled over right away for me to rub his belly, and like I said, he was scared. He, he had a tag, so we scooped him up and thought we'd call the number on the tag. However, the tag was a rabies tag, which is great from 9:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday, because what we learned, this veterinarian rabies tag is not a local, well, I'm sure it's a local one, but not here in Bel Air. And we took the dog actually to the emergency vet clinic to see if it was chipped, ran into three other couples or people, families that had taken dogs down there to see if they were chipped as well. And what I learned is there is no database whatsoever. The only one who could give me that name and address of this little dog was the veterinarian clinic. Well, guess what? It's July 4th. It was noon. They didn't open until 8 o'clock the next morning, and this happens in the evenings and on the weekends as well. Now, so we took the little guy home, and after about 30 seconds of meeting, our dog Lucky and found out this guy's name was Bruno, they turned our house into basically a jungle gym, and had lots of fun, and stayed indoors, and were safe and cool, and played all day and all night. But anyway, getting to the point where I wanted to call this owner's, you know, this dog's owner, but I could, it was the next morning at 8:00 AM, the veterinarian clinic opened. I called at 8 o'clock. By 8:40, the lady was at our house picking her up. She had not slept all night, because here it is, there's fireworks going off. Her little baby got scared, got out of it. He's never gotten out before, and she was ready. She had not slept all night, worried about him when he was safe and sound. And I just think, you know, my dog had gotten out, I wish that would have, you know, someone would take care of them too. So it was just sad to find out that in 2018, that it's really hard, even when you do the right thing and you tag your dog and you get the city license, that still, in case of weekends, you know, a couple, two, three days can go by before you can be reunited with your pet. I'm proud to say that the City of Bel Air offers pet licenses that remedy, or can remedy, this type of situation. And again, yeah, City Hall has these records, but City Hall's closed on July 4th too, so, but we have a remedy that I've learned about and certainly be taking advantage of, and I'm going to be promoting this to veterinarians across the region, actually, because our dog tag contains a QR code. So the dogs are licensed here in Bel Air. You can buy one of these so that anyone with a smartphone can simply scan the code and get that, get the dog's information right away, get the owner's, the human's, information right away. So once a citizen purchases a city license, which are required for all dogs living in Bel Air, they should receive a City of Bel Air dog license to wear on their collar. Like I said, the owner can simply scan the QR code and enters the information on the dog and how to contact the owner. That way, if the dog gets lost, anyone with a smartphone can scan the code and immediately know who it belongs to. In addition, the owner gets an email stating that someone has scanned the QR code, so you can't just scan it and not do anything about it too. So the owner's going to get an email. This tag is free to all who register their pet in the town of Bel Air. So city staff actually created a short video on how this works, and I'm really proud that we're doing this, because I don't know if any other cities locally are doing it, but I'd like to watch that video real quick if we could.
Are you lost? Let's see. What do we have here? Oh, look, it's a Bel Air's new dog license tag. Hmm, scanner call. I can scan that here. Oh, look, your name is Max, and this has your owner's name, phone number, and email listed, so we can get ahold of them right away and let them know I found you. All right, Max, let's go.
I want to thank Tristan for doing that. Again, anybody who has their license here, you can pick one of those up. You know, Lucky would have missed out on the playdate, but Bruno's mother would have slept a lot easier that night, knowing that. So I'll just want to encourage everybody to do that, and while I'm on my soapbox, encourage all spaying and neutering as well. So with that, we're going to move on to ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. But before we do that, we actually are going to get reports from our city attorney and our city manager. I realize I skipped over that, I'm so sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a formal report.
Okay, city manager?
Just a couple of things, Mayor. The K24 Corridor Association is moving along very nicely. There's a meeting tomorrow morning in Kechai for establishing, creating the bylaws, and then the month after that, I think the bylaws will be adopted, and committees set, officers elected, and then that will start moving along as an association. The other thing is that I know council's aware of, but I want to make the citizens aware that the selection committee for the walking biking master plan consultant, consultation firms met last week and selected three different companies to interview the end of the month. So this is, as council member Benage spoke about, that's another grant that the city received from WAMPO to help create a master walking and biking plan for the city as we grow, to hopefully add those in. We know that Woodlawn will include that as well. So we'll probably in August or September, they'll be bringing a recommendation to the council for a consulting firm to start that process as well. So, thank you, Mayor.
Then I am going to move on to ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. Before us this evening, we have a couple of plats. We have a memorandum of understanding. We have a contract addendum with the City of Wichita. We're going to look at choosing the engineer so that we can begin the Woodlawn expansion project, and also we have a letter of support to go over on our agenda this evening. The first item to come before council this evening is item A, consideration of a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Villas at Elk Creek Homeowners Association. This is regarding the second addition. This is something that's been on and off the agenda for several months now, so I wanted to take a couple of, just quick minutes on, to talk on this topic. Let everybody know, you know, the business of governing is not easy, and it's not something that any of us up here take lightly. When all of us up here ran, we knew that there would be decisions as council members that people just weren't going to like. And those people are our friends and our neighbors. These are hard decisions. Some of them do have downsides, but the city government, or the neighbors and residents who volunteer to serve in this capacity up here, such as our planning commission, and most of us up here, have tried to act in good faith throughout this process. And I'm happy to report that I think we are at an understanding tonight, after a lot of conversations and had, myself, I privately had some conversations with a member of the Elk Creek Homeowners Association Board, as well as a couple of the residents over the weekend, once we discussed this at our last meeting. So I think we are at the finish line with this. Just a brief history on the timeline, just to kind of reminder of this, that this development was originally platted back in 2007, 11 years ago. However, in 2011, the original developer went bankrupt, and his bank took over the ownership. Then Elk Creek 4 was created in 2013, so going back five years, and they took ownership of all the lots except for 9. And these are the nine lots we're talking about tonight. These are the nine lots at the south end, next to the floodplain and wetlands. Keep in mind, those lots have always been planted as residential, in the northwest corner of 45th and Rock was always zoned for commercial. But rather than allow those nine lots to go to the sheriff's sale, which I think would have increased the turmoil in this development, the city stepped in to take over ownership of these nine, at that time, nine most undesirable lots due to floodplain issues. At that time, no one really understood the significance of the floodplain issues involved, and we were forced to wait until FEMA produced flood maps, reported exactly how the floodplain would restrict the buildability on these nine lots. The entire time, our goal was to take care of the flood issues and get something suitable built on the property. So when the FEMA floodplain reports came back, the city discovered the floodplain issues were a lot more severe than originally expected. I want to, so I want everybody to know floodplain, that doesn't mean these lots are going to flood. It just means that some, you know, FEMA determines that, and then you run into things where getting home loans and insurance that's required and all of that on those parts of the lots there. So when we learned this, that meant that the land is platted, could not be developed, again, without a major fill-in investment or replating. This was a major investment. So rather than petition to respread all of the specials to other property owners in the vicinity, which I don't think that would have been liked that much too, the city, meaning all the taxpayers, in good faith, took ownership of those lots at that time. And those lots were going to be developed. We, so in the fall of 2017 is when this really, so it took that long of a time to get to where we are today. So it was in the fall, we actually had some conversations and made an offer to give the lots to the Elk Creek Homeowners Association. However, the burden of the specials already on those lots and requirement of replat, that would have been pretty costly to them as well. There had been mention of, you know, building parks. They, you know, talked about things that they could do with those lots, but again, it came down to the financial burden of these lots. So earlier this year, we hired an engineering consultant to see what could be done with these lots. We had our first open meeting in January of 2018, where the council approved a motion to invest in the cost to replat the lots with the goal of getting them sold and listed on the MLAS. And we've had pretty much a public process, you know, ever since then. Then came up at April 17th, when we heard some requests and opposition from members of the HOA, and they respectfully requested that we table the matter, as they had a few concerns. So we did that. That was six, like I said, over six days ago. And we decided to table the matter, believing we could resolve the concerns, did some amendments, and I'm happy to say that I think we are, we've done it. That, I think I can truthfully say that. So, but just to let everybody know, the, you know, rumors out there, these lots were never, ever, and we're going to have substandard housing, or apartments, or trailers, or what have you on that. So, you know, we had, the land bank actually met earlier today to approve this MOU conditionally upon the HOU signing, and requested the final plat with additional HOA language and building setbacks, so that it could be conditionally approved with the MOU being approved by the HOA. So therefore, I am recommending that the council approve the MOU contingent upon the HOU signing by August 1. I understand there's going to be a meeting on Thursday, and so that is my recommendation to the council. Again, just a little bit of history on where we are with that. And this MOU addresses the concerns, and I think we'll have it to where everyone can be happy, and the homes are going to be built to Elk Creek standards, and I'm looking forward to beautiful and big homes being built on those lots and increasing property values over there, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve the MOU with the Villas at Elk Creek Homeowners Association with an amendment to include the agreement that the land bank will petition for a zone modification within 60 days of the HOA signing the MOU, and extend the deadline of signing the MOU to August 1, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Next item B is consideration of the final plat as amended to include plat language regarding setbacks for the Elk Creek second addition.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we conditionally approve the final plat for Elk Creek second addition as amended to include plat language regarding minimum square footages of homes constructed on certain lots and subject to the approval of an MOU between the city, the HOA, and the land bank by August 1, 2018, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and two seconds there. Yeah, this is, you know, this plat actually creates reserves on the lots, you know, to allow for the new home construction, so we're looking forward to that. But, yeah, the wording on the plats included these nine lots are members of the Elk Creek HOA too, so want to point that out.
Mr. Mayor? I do just want to be clear and maybe state again exactly what we're doing here. So in the prior motion, we approved a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Elk Creek HOA conditional to their approval. And so my motion that I just made is subject to the condition that they accept the memorandum of understanding that we just conditionally approved. And upon their acceptance of that memorandum of understanding, we'll have a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Elk Creek Homeowners Association, and the plat will become final with the amendments that we've discussed. Just to kind of recap, it's a...
Just to kind of recap, it seems a little bit complicated. And I just want to make sure everyone understands exactly what that motion does.
Any other questions or comments? City attorney, want to add anything to this or should we just call for the vote?
No, I think you covered it completely.
Okay. Okay, since the plat does call for a roll call vote, Councilmember Benage?
Yea.
Councilmember Elsaf?
Yea.
Councilmember Hawes?
Yea.
Councilmember Martine?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative. Okay, we'll move along to item C. I'm happy to announce that a new senior housing complex is coming to Central Park. Mark Schellenberg, a very successful builder on the west side, has contracted to buy the land east of City Hall, south of Central Park Avenue. This is north of Elk Creek and west of Brock Road. I know that MKEC does have a, yep, is here to answer any questions, if we have any, or need to share anything before we move forward or just here to answer any questions. I'd like to mention that the planning commission unanimously approved the preliminary plat at their July 12th meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe we skipped item D.
No, we're on item C.
Oh, sorry. Reading ahead.
Yeah, not a problem. Yeah, we're, yeah, so yeah, we're talking about item C here, the final plat for the Villas at Prestwick. Senior housing. And we do have pictures of it. They're on the screen. And we do have, you know, the handout. We got our packet too. This is, like I said, I'm happy to announce this is coming and looking forward to it. And this is a demand. And I'm excited to see another successful developer. See, Bel Air is a good place to be.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm also very excited to see this coming to Bel Air. I attended the planning commission meeting where this was discussed in detail last week and thought there was a very thorough discussion of this. Most of the questions really revolved around how the properties were going to be screened from the other additions at Elk Creek and along the roads. And I thought the developer and developers represented did an excellent job of addressing those questions and concerns. There were also several homeowners from that area that were present and asked a lot of questions. And they appeared to me to be satisfied with the responses from the developer. So I'm in favor of that. And I'm going to move that we approve the final plat for the Villas at Prestwick subject to the completion of closing the transfer of the sale of property the current proposed buyer and authorize all required signatures. Second.
First and second, any other questions or comments? Call for a roll call vote on this as well. Councilmember Benage?
Aye.
Councilmember Elsaf?
Aye.
Councilmember Hawes?
Aye.
Councilmember Martine?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
I also vote in the affirmative. Now on to item D, which is consideration of an addendum. This is to our November 20th, 2007 contract with the City of Wichita. Our staff has been working with the City of Wichita in order to make needed changes to the water agreement. Again, signed back in 2007. An addendum was created after much negotiations, a lot of negotiations, that, which was approved by the previous city council back in January 3rd this year. The addendum then went to the Wichita City Council who suggested just a couple of small minor changes relating to the water meter maintenance and sewer line location. So as a result, staff felt it was important for the city council to reaffirm the addendum with these minor changes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the addendum to the November 20th, 2007 Wichita water contract and June 12th, 2018 sewer agreement and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
First and second, are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item E is selecting for a design engineer. This is for the expansion of Woodlawn Avenue. This is something that many of us have been looking forward to for quite a while now. The city received a grant from WAMPO to expand Woodlawn. This is from 37th to 45th, including the intersection there where the four-way is at 45th and Woodlawn. Funding and construction will take place in 2020. However, now is the time to hire an engineer. This is to begin the design work and engage the public. Since the money comes from the federal government through KDOT, KDOT has put some specific specifications that we have to follow. One is to request qualifications from engineering companies and then have a selection committee recommend a firm for final approval. The selection committee consisted of our city engineer Ian Stevens, our city manager Ty Lasher, planning commissioner David Floyd, and councilmember Hawes and Benage. And from what I understand, this was not an easy decision. Sound like there were two, if not three, very close ones there. But several companies had very good presentations. In the end, it's my understanding that MKEC, based on the recommendations from the committee, is the one that came out on top. So, you know, my recommendation is to go along with the selection committee's recommendation. If nobody else has anything else to add to that?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a couple of comments to this. This is probably the most important thing the city's going to do today that's going on of all the other things we've been discussed. It's a gateway to Bel Air, and we need to do it right. We can have more economic impact on the city by doing this right than probably any other project that we're thinking about. We need to decide among, we had to decide among several very good proposals. In the end, we selected, the group selected MKEC because best success for the product. And they did work on this project in 2002. And they also are very familiar with the flooding issues of the Quail Creek Pond and the Trippitary 7. In fact, they will use video traffic counting and predictive pedestrian counts. We think that, we thought that was the best thing for the city so we could get accurate traffic because it's important to get this right. And getting that data is going to lead to good design, so. But I think, at least from my perspective, I'm not speaking for the rest of the people that were on the group. We, but from my perspective, those are the main things why I chose MKEC.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it's very exciting that we're starting to see this Woodlawn project move forward. I move that we select MKEC for the Woodlawn expansion project and authorize staff to conduct negotiations for a contract.
Second.
First and second, are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Final item to come before council this evening is considering a letter of support. This is to the United States Department of Transportation for the 254 and 135 interchange, the North Junction Build Grant Application by the City of Wichita. Like I said, this is a grant that they are putting together. And as we all know, that interchange has a lot of congestion there, 235 and 135 and K-96. And 235, actually, they all intersect there. So I feel a reconstruction of that interchange would be very positive for our citizens and for this region and for our commuters and our school. So basically, what this is, is asking council to approve that we simply submit a letter that we're in favor of them getting this grant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion that we approve the letter of support for the North Junction Reconstruction Build Grant submitted by the City of Wichita and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Any discussion or future issues we need to bring up this evening? No need for executive session? The whole argument has begun, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Set in accord.